Hi, we are live.
Okay, we're live. Okay, I would like to call our May 2020 meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, EJ, could you put the agenda back up on the screen?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay.
Is it up?
Yes, it is. Thank you. Okay, before we get started with tonight's meeting, I do have a message that I would like to read to our residents. This is to the residents of Schuylkill Township. There is a light at the end of the tunnel. The curve on the new cases of COVID-19 are flattening, and Governor Wolf's phased plan to start reopening Pennsylvania goes into effect on May 8th. But we will be stepping out into a new normal. This virus is still with us, and until ineffective treatment and vaccine are found and widely distributed, the social distancing skills and safety measures our residents have practiced so diligently over these past weeks must not be put by the wayside. Chester County is currently in the red zone of the reopening plan, and we don't know when the stay-at-home order will be lifted. But each of us should still use this time to think about what it's going to take to stay safe and well in this ongoing public health crisis. Social distancing should become second nature. Customs such as shaking hands and hugging should be reevaluated. Large gatherings may not be in our best interests. Businesses need to think about measures to safely reopen and operate responsibly to keep staff and customers protected. Vulnerable populations will still need to be protected. It is up to all of us. We are confident that our residents will take personal responsibility for their actions and do the right thing. I'd like to quote Paula Dean, and I want to thank Madeline for this quote. "We are brother, we are our brother's keepers. It's going to be up to all of us." Okay, so let me see here. I'm going to hand it over to EJ so he can talk about our overview of virtual meetings protocols.
Thank you, Martha. Yeah, I just want to do a quick overview of how tonight's meeting is going to run. Obviously, it's being held virtually for the second month in a row due to the governor's stay-at-home order. It's not really safe to meet in person right now. And as long as Chester County remains labeled red county per the governor's phased reopening plan, all township meetings will continue to be either canceled or held virtually. And, you know, we just ask and urge residents to continue checking the website for updates. So this is a public meeting. The date and time had been previously advertised. All of the login information has been published on the township's website, on the Facebook page, and via the township's Constant Contact Mass Email Notification Service. All attendees participating in tonight's meeting and residents and members of the public who are attending are automatically muted upon entering the meeting. Only the meeting organizer, which is myself, and the supervisors and solicitor can be seen and heard. This meeting is being recorded, so as soon as I started the live broadcast, this is recorded, and it will be posted on the township's website once the recording becomes available. In addition, as always, meeting minutes will be available and posted once approved by the board on the township's website. Public comment will be allowed and conducted during the meeting, just like a regular meeting. It'll just look a little differently. All comments must be submitted in writing, either in advance of the meeting to the Township's General Administration email or during the question, or excuse me, using the question function on this platform. So there's two different times that people may want to submit public comments. One is on specific agenda items, so the agenda is available and should be visible to everybody. So if anybody attending has a comment or question on specific agenda items, those will be accepted prior to the board voting on them. I would ask that you submit those now instead of waiting for that agenda item to come up. We will wait a few seconds prior to a vote to allow any last-minute comments, but you can submit them in advance, and then we'll read them at the appropriate time. Otherwise, any public comments on non-agenda items, any general comments or questions will be read aloud during the public comment period of the meeting, but you don't have to wait till that time to submit them. You can submit them at any time. Madeline and I are keeping an eye on the comments, and we will read them into the record at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, EJ. So again, if anyone has any comments, it would be appropriate for you to submit them at any time during the meeting, but they will be brought up at the appropriate time. So, okay, moving on with our agenda, our consent agenda, the acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors for April 1st, 2020 Business Meeting, and the acceptance of reports, all departmental committee, commission, council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of April 2020. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The Treasurer's Report and Payment of Bills for the period ending April 30th, 2020. Consideration of Acceptance of the Treasurer's Report and Approval to Pay the Bills. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, EJ?
Thank you. The general fund balance as of April 30th was $3,574,336.91, which was an increase of about $540,000 from the end of March. So over the previous month, it increased by about $540,000. Comparing that to the same time period last year, the general fund balance is currently about $324,000 higher than it was at the same time last year. All other funds saw increases in their balances except for the pension funds and the Capital Roads Fund because we had the final lease payment on the international dump truck for the month of April. To date, our general fund revenues, we received about 31% of our budgeted revenues through the end of April. As far as expenditures, we've spent about 21% of our budgeted expenditures through the end of April. And I'll just touch on this, just like I did last month. Last month, obviously, we're keeping an eye on the township's budget and finances, given the COVID-19 situation. It's still a little early for us to fully assess and evaluate what the financial impact of the township is going to be. We do anticipate a dip in our revenues primarily due to lower earned income tax collections. Anyone who's lost their job or has been laid off, that's lost revenue to the township through the earned income tax. Through the end of April, we were just, we were about $30,000 behind where we were last year, which is, those numbers kind of vary each month just depending on collection, so that's not a significant amount. In talking to other townships and in consultation with PSATs, they're estimating that municipalities might see anywhere from a 10% to 15% reduction in earned income tax revenue, but that will vary by municipality. You know, it all depends on the demographics of the workforce of the given municipalities. But just to give you an idea, 10% to 15% of our earned income taxes, anywhere from about $230,000 to $350,000. So if we fell into that, into that range, that would be our lost revenue. Other than that, we might take a slight reduction in our real estate collections. If the board passes the resolution tonight to extend the deadlines, that would result in a slight decrease by extending the discount period. Our tax collector ran some numbers on that, and he estimated somewhere between $10,000 and $12,000 less. So that's negligible as far as the overall budget is concerned. We're continuing to keep an eye on it. Spending is down. So far, you know, tracking year-to-date, our revenues are ahead of where we were last year. So we do anticipate that we'll see some reductions. We just, it's just too soon to know what the full impact of those will be. So that's it for the Treasurer's Report. As far as the bills go, I've reviewed all the bills. Everything's in good order and, you know, recommend payment of those as well.
Okay, I just have a quick question for you, EJ. You know, if we do foresee that we would have a 10% reduction in our revenues, do you think we should revisit our budget in August, September?
Um, maybe July.
Oh, July? Okay. If I could make a suggestion, and I, and I, this is just a suggestion. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about this. But I think that our, like, road crew, Nick, and you, and our chief of police might want to start looking at their budgets and saying, where can we cut 10% or 15%? Just to start looking at it. I'm not saying to do it, but just to start looking at that and see what we could do. Because if, you know, if, I think we need to be proactive about this as opposed to being reactive about it. But I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but that's my opinion. So.
We've already started doing that.
Okay, good, good.
And we haven't made any cuts yet, obviously, but we've, we've started kind of identifying and prioritizing budgeted items in, in the event that cuts would need to be made or projects that were budgeted for that could be deferred. Or we're trying to prioritize them in terms of like, what would be the first to go?
Okay. Good. Good, that's good. Okay, so there, I made the motion. Mark seconded it, and any more comments or discussions? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, two-minute reports. Well, since we didn't have any meetings last month, I think it's a bit difficult to get two-minute reports here. EJ, do you have anything that you would like to say?
Just a couple of things real quick, and I know that some of these are in your list of announcements for the end of the meeting, so I don't want to double dip. But construction restarted last week statewide, specifically in the township. Valley Park is kind of our main construction project that was put on hold. So I did reach out to the contractor to, you know, formally notify him that he was authorized to resume work. He just had punch list items left, so I asked him, you know, to provide me with his schedule when he plans on getting out there. And basically just told him that, you know, the door's open. As soon as you're able to come out there and finish the work, you're authorized to do so. Just wanted to give a shout out to, if I, if I could, to Madeline and to John Davy, our volunteer webmaster. I'm not sure if anybody's been on the township website lately, but they started this Hometown Heroes photo submission, basically asking residents to submit photos and write-ups of people who are, you know, on the front lines who are making them proud or doing something great or special during this difficult time. And it's gone really well so far, and it's really kind of heartwarming to visit the front page of the website and see some of the pictures and some of the stories. That was all Madeline's idea, so she deserves all the credit. And John Davy helped put it into action by, you know, making it work with the website. So huge shout out to them. That was a really great idea and well-executed.
Yes, I think it's great.
And we're accepting photos and submissions as well.
Yeah, I think, I think it looks really great and was definitely a really great idea. Thank you, Madeline. Okay. EJ, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Board discussion items, old business discussion, municipal parks, signage, and regulations. And I see my name next to that. Thanks, EJ.
And I'm actually going to put up the map of, of Valley Park.
Actually, I wanted to talk about the rules and regulations first.
No problem.
Okay, so EJ had pulled together some information from about 13 municipalities, and it was in all of their ordinances, and he put them in a Dropbox. And since I have nothing to do now, I asked him if I could help in some way, and he said, yeah, come up with some park rules and regulations for us. So I did, and I pulled everything together from these different municipalities, and I came up with these 14 rules and regulations. And on the second page, there's enforcement and the violations and penalties. So I wanted to see if anybody had any comments, questions, deletions, additions, or anything that they wanted to make with just the rules for, for right now. And then we can go on to the second page with the enforcement and violations. Any comments about the rules?
So Martha, I actually couldn't find the rules in my packet. But I, I know from talking to you, one rule that I wanted to bring up, which I think you probably put in there, and this may be an unpopular view, but we do bring our dogs to Valley Park, and we do let them off the leash. And I wondered if there was something we could say short of, I imagine you put in their dogs have to be leashed. And I wonder if there's something we could put in there short of that, saying you're responsible for your dog on or off leash, because it is nice. I have old dogs, so it's nice to let them loose. And if we see other people, we do put them on a leash and we hold them so they don't go up to people. But it is nice to be able to do that when possible. So I guess I just wanted to get people's temperatures on that one.
Um, all I have, the only comment that I have to make about that is no municipality in the 13 municipalities of the ordinances that EJ gave to me said anything about letting a dog not on a leash. They all said animals had to be on a leash. Hey, Bob, I'm going to poke you for a second here because I know that you're very close to, I don't remember what her name is, from the Medal of Honor Grove. And I know that they have had issues with dogs. Would you be able to say anything about that?
Not without talking to Deb first. I know the Friends of the Grove, Deb Wolfson, has had their share of issues with, with dogs. Some with cleaning up behind them, some with being on leashes or running loose. But I think they're, I think they have a leash rule, but I'd have to check with her before I'd really weigh in on that.
Now, I will tell you, I've talked to her, and my understanding from her, and I could be wrong, could be a misunderstanding, but my understanding from her was that the bigger concern was that their Medal of Honor Grove is really a sacred place. And so they felt like people are going there to honor people who served, and, you know, they deserve kind of a quiet place to reflect. And so it was more that they thought it was kind of disrespectful to have people letting their dogs run. But I'm happy to talk to her and see if there were additional concerns. And I just, I know this is, you know, probably a different view, but it does feel like, I know a lot of people did like to let their dogs go there, and now they can't. And so now, I totally believe you should pick up after your dog, and I think that that's a great rule. But I guess it just did not seem necessary to leash them if they, now, again, I think you should be responsible for your dog. Maybe it should say you must leash if requested, but half the time we go and there's no one there, so.
Could I weigh in on, could I weigh in on this? I worked with Deb pretty extensively when she was having issues with dogs in the Medal of Honor Grove.
Sure.
They were out of control. You had dogs running all over the place, running up to people, scaring them. In addition to being disrespectful, it was becoming a safety issue. There were dog fights, and people who had incidents with all of their dogs had no control over other dogs. So every animal has to be leashed in the Medal of Honor Grove because of issues, not just because of the disrespect.
I know they had a couple of bad dog bite incidents there that also could change those rules.
Okay, Susan?
Well, I'm happy to be outvoted.
Okay, Susan, you said that you couldn't read what it says. I'll just read it out loud. It's under number three.
Yeah, I just couldn't find it in our packet.
It's under old business?
Oh, under old business, okay.
And it just says, "Properly licensed pets are permitted only when restrained by a leash. Persons shall be responsible for cleaning up and immediately disposing of animal waste. Pet owners are responsible for all injuries inflicted by their pets to any person or other pet." That's all it says.
Okay, well, I certainly can accept being outvoted, so I wanted to raise it, but I certainly have different views.
Okay, all right.
I would like to ask, what is Section 14? It's mentioned a couple of times, I think, in line item one.
Yeah, it's number 14 on the list, Bob.
Oh, on this?
Yeah.
I got, I got.
Overnight camping, hunting, shooting, archery, special events, horseback riding are prohibited unless approval has been issued by the Board of Supervisors of Schuylkill Township. Now, under this number, I have to tell you, I took everything that every municipality had an exception for. And I think it was about 10 out of the 13 municipalities all had exceptions. So I just took all of their exceptions and put it in there. If you don't want to allow for any of this stuff and you don't want it to have exceptions, we can add that to the rules. I don't really care. It doesn't matter to me. I just took the lead from the other municipalities. So any other comments or questions about the rules and regulations?
I don't think we need to allow for horseback riding back there.
It's not, this is not just for Valley Park. This is also for...
Oh, it's for the whole township. Got it.
Well, it's for all of our parks, so it would also include the preserve, so.
You're good.
Okay.
Yeah, I was thinking about Valley Park specifically, but yeah, that, for all parks, good, you're good.
Yeah, okay.
And since everybody's weighed on within the leash thing, I've been chased by a dog. My wife's been chased by a dog off a leash. I don't need a dog chasing me off of a leash in that park. I know that people in my neighborhood have been chased by dogs who've escaped and been off of a leash because they've escaped from backyard. I mean, I, I understand some people take care of their dogs, and their dogs are, dogs are nice enough, but I'm not going to be in favor of unleashed dogs in a park around here.
I do have a question about number seven with regards to historical artifacts. I'd asked a little while back about if somebody could go in there with a metal detector. Would the board be allowed to give approval if it were brought to the Historical Commission, if anything were found, or the Historical Commission signed off to at least metal detect and see what's back there? Because there was a park back there at one time, and there's, there's an old junkyard back there. There's...
Were you talking about it at Valley Park?
Yeah, at Valley Park.
Well, township owns it. The township could authorize someone to do that. And it's township property. As long as it remains township property, I guess it could be, you know, given to the Historic Commission for safekeeping. All right, you can't allow the members of the public to go in and, you know, scavenger hunt. But if it's controlled, it's township property. If it remains township property, I think it's okay.
Okay. So it'd be a case-by-case basis. If somebody wanted to go in, they'd run it by the Historical Commission, bring it to the board, and the board could give a thumbs up or down?
Well, to be clear, you say allow someone to go in, it would have to be someone going in for purposes of preserving it for the township. It could not be a member of the public going in and taking things out and taking them home for, you know, to possess them or own them.
Okay.
So and I think that that's why I just, I, I think that's why the other municipalities have just said they're not allowing this at all. So I don't know, does, does the board want to change this and make that an exception? Or do you want to leave it the way it is? Nobody's saying anything.
I have no strong feelings.
For historical reasons, I think it's good to be able to do it with those conditions that Bill said, that it's, if it's done, if somebody wants to explore with the township's permission, that they don't remove anything, that it could maybe be put inside the, I call it the ticket booth, but the existing building there. There's quite a bit back there. Still, I know as a kid, we used to go in there, we'd find all kinds of things.
Okay, so Bill, is there a way for you to reword this that says that if anyone finds anything, that it's township property, and they have to give it back to the township?
How would we ever believe that? How would we ever make sure that you...
Do we have somebody go in there for supervision with the person who's doing the metal detecting?
Supervision and storage and maintenance and things like that. I mean, the point is that a township is not permitted to give anything away under any circumstances to anybody unless it's authorized in the code. So if it's township property and it has some historic value, the township owns it and can't, you know, you just can't give it away. So then if we allow someone in and he develops a lot of stuff, then we, you know, if it has any value, we have to store it. And, and when this work is going on, we really should have it supervised to make sure that people don't find valuable things and put them in their pocket. So it can be done, but it could be sort of a production.
I think that's really complicated, and I'm, I'm okay with not allowing it. And if somebody really feels strongly enough, they can come to us, and I think they can ask us permission. But I think from a day-to-day basis, I don't think we should allow it. Anybody else?
I agree. I think that makes sense. But they could certainly work with the Historic Commission, and maybe that could be a project or a weekend event or...
Yeah, if it's a township-sponsored thing where somebody's doing the bidding of the township, that's one thing. If we allow hobbyists to go in there and do it on any day of the week, that's a different thing, so I agree.
I think that's a good point. I think having it be a township-sanctioned event is, is a good, a good way to put it, so.
Now, if your dogs dig them up, I don't think that's a problem.
What's that?
Just kidding. I said, if my dogs dig them up.
Oh, gosh. Okay, any other comments or questions about the rules and regulations? All right, let's move to the second page for the enforcement.
Martha, sorry, go ahead.
On the second page of the enforcement section, it's basically just one sentence. It says, "Police Code Enforcement Officers or the Township Manager are hereby authorized to enforce all rules and regulations established by the Board of Supervisors of Schuylkill Township." There was only two municipalities where it was just their township manager that had the authority to enforce anything. Everybody else had a mixture of the police, the code enforcement officer, and the township manager. I threw everything in there. I don't really care. I, I have no strong feelings either way. Like I said, I just put that in there, but I wanted everyone to know that two municipalities actually said that the only person that could enforce it was the township manager.
EJ, are you available on weekends for policing?
Absolutely.
All right, Bill, I didn't know if maybe you had any, any comments about this.
Most of these things in parks are not intended to be police actions. They're just trying to let the public know that they should be kind and use common sense in following the regulations. But the truth is that EJ has no business enforcing any of these regulations, and if he's out there with his handcuffs, he and others will get into a lot of trouble. So if there's to be any legal enforcement, we have to have an ordinance. And under the code, the ordinance would authorize the police to, you know, to control it. Now, that's a little heavy-handed. We, you know, we want to play nice, and that's why most townships, from my observation, don't get into a, you know, a strict regulation scheme in terms of bad behavior in parks. But, you know, you can't just tell the manager it's going to enforce this. So what does that mean? It means really nothing. It's just, you can, you can write them a letter and say, you're, you know, you stopped doing what you're doing. Now, it could be a nuisance what they're doing, so it may be covered under the nuisance law. But the police would still have to, you know, take action under it and issue a formal citation.
Right.
There's no level of power to enforce regulations if it's not in the second-class township code.
Okay, so that gets us under the violations and penalties. So again, I wanted to go back to the 13 municipalities. When they talked about the enforcement and the violations, a number of them had made addendums and changes to their code, and a portion of what they changed were the enforcement, and they added code enforcement officers or the township manager as part of their changes. And then they also quoted the second-class township. And then they also quoted the second-class township under the violations and penalties. So, I don't know what that means, Bill. I, I don't know if there was something that happened at one of their parks and they went to take it to a district justice and the district justice made a comment and said, "Well, did your code enforcement officer do whatever? Did your township manager do whatever?" I have no clue. I, I, I really don't know.
No, I, I didn't print that up for, for the take-home. The code officer, uh, is a law enforcement officer, uh, under, under the law. And, uh, the code guy would have the right to, um, issue a citation. But I would need to make sure that the ordinance gives him that, uh, authority specifically. So I could take a look at it. I, I, I can't do it tonight.
Okay, no, 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 that's fine. That's fine. Um, so then under violations and penalties, Bill, did you happen to print this out or, or do you have access to this?
You know, I, I couldn't get it.
Okay, so, um, it says here, "In accordance with the Pennsylvania Second Class Township Code, um, 53 PS subsection blah, 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 blah. Any person who violates the rules and regulations adopted as set forth above commits a summary offense. Representatives of Schuylkill Township shall enforce the above rules and regulations by an action brought before the District Justice with competent jurisdiction in the same manner provided for the enforcement of summary offenses under the Pennsylvania Rules of Criminal Procedure."
That's the standard ordinance power that you have under the code and, uh, enforcing these regulations can be put under that power. So that can be done.
Okay, all right. So now the next section says, "Any person violating any one of these rules and regulations shall pay a fine not exceeding..." And now this is where it gets interesting because the municipalities ranged anywhere from $300 up to $1,000.
Yeah, the, the MPC, which doesn't apply, is 600. It used to be 500. The, I'll check the code and see what it is now. We haven't gone after anybody in a while. Uh, so whatever is in the code right now, uh, we can stick in the, in the ordinance and say that's how much, um, uh, that's how much we're charging.
Okay.
It's always written-
And say, "Those numbers seem insane to me and putting in jail time." I mean, is that pretty standard? I feel like what, the things you're talking about in the rules are things like, you know, playing their music too loud and, um, I mean, it just seems like those are insane.
I just copied, I, uncle, I just copied it from, from, from somebody else. I think it was like three municipalities. They, they have it word for word in this. Um, the only thing that was different was, um, the, the numbers, the dollar amounts. So-
No, less, you can't make them more than the code, than the second-class township code requires. You can put in 50 or 100 or something if you like, or 25, whatever you like.
I mean, I just feel like there should be a minimum and not, it shouldn't be 300. I mean, if you, you know, put your music too loud, $300 is a lot.
That's why it's not exceeding.
Well, the, it's, it's implied in your Viking ham. If I can jump in, the District Justice has authority only to, to less.
Range. Okay, well, if that's not a range, then I'm fine with it. As long as there, it's not a minimum. I read that as being a minimum between $300-
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, 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 no.
To be decided number.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, I, 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 I should have made that more clear. Yes. I had no clue what number this should be or what it can be, what's appropriate. Um, that's why I have it in, in red. Um, I, I don't have a clue.
What the fine would be, like if we put in there not exceeding $300 and the police go and someone's playing their music loud, does the police decide, okay, this is a $300 violation or this is a $100 violation?
Or $10.
I think, I think they put in 300 and it's up to the district justice to, to put in the 25, which has been my experience. The district justices know they're dealing with usually with voters and families and they want to get reelected. So usually, uh, for a violation of this sort, it would be $25 or something like that plus cost.
Yeah, that would make sense. Okay. Okay. I want it to be a friendly park. This just seems pretty dogged. I, I totally agree with that. And I was really surprised when I was reading all of these municipalities and their rules and their regulations. And I was just like, wow. And so that's why I just wanted you guys to, to, to see what everyone else did and what everyone else had and we could make it what we would want to make it. I, I didn't want to leave anything out. I didn't want to make this, you know, my opinion. I wanted to just put everything in there. So, um, I,
This is, this is-
That's why it is what it is.
This is very, uh, standard ordinance language as far as penalties and enforcement goes. I mean, how, how this plays out in reality, especially in the case of a park is probably nine times out of 10 a verbal, a verbal warning is going to be given, you know? Because like you said, Susan, I mean, most of the things on this list are, are not, you know, very serious transgression. So, you know, if we get a call or a complaint, the police go out there and someone's doing one of these things they're not allowed to do, chances are they're probably going to give them a warning. Now, if it escalates and happens numerous times-
$25.
Yeah, but the ordinance, the, the ordinance language is always drafted to, uh, allow for the worst-case scenario. This, the language is very, very standard.
Yeah, I would look at, 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 if you go back to the rules and regulations, if you look at number two where it talks about township property. I mean, if people start destroying our property, then yeah, I think I would want to find them.
Or number 10 with public drunkenness or something, you know?
Yeah.
Could be any of the above.
You know, did, you know, mostly, yeah.
And keep in mind, you, you know, very serious things that might fall under this. If it's really serious, it probably also falls under the crime code. So they're going to get cited under the crimes code if they're doing something really, really bad out there. Right, Bill? Um, is that right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So, is everybody okay with this as it is right now? Okay, so I guess I will make a motion, um, that the board approves the rules and regulations as written and authorizes to give it to EJ or Bill?
Bill Brennan.
Okay.
Depending, depending determination.
To give it to Bill Brennan. Uh, authorizes to give it to Bill Brennan for him to put it into, um, ordinance form so that at our next meeting, um, we could advertise the ordinances. And then at the following meeting, we could, um, put them in place. So I've made that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, um, any more discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Let me hold on. Let me check to see if there's any public, uh-
Oh, I'm sorry. I did, I did mean to do that. I'm, I'm so sorry. Is there any public comment or questions?
No, not on this item.
Not on that item. Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now, the next thing about specifically to Valley Park, um, EJ, you had a map that you were going to put up?
Yep.
Okay.
It's just the, the 2013, uh, concept design with some-
So, um, one of the days, uh, the early days, um, under our, um, stay-at-home, um, um, thing that we have going on here with the COVID-19, I did take a walk over to the park and as I happened to be at the park, there, um, were several residents there and, um, I was talking with them and they said they really loved the park. They appreciated the fact that the park was open because so many other parks around them were closed. And as I was talking to them, I said, you know, is there something here that is missing that you guys would like to see? And, um, I also had conversations with, um, Susan. And yes, there are some things that people would like to see. And one of them is they'd like to see a map of the, the, the park and what it has and, um, some signage and, um, some rule, well, obviously rules and regulations. And Susan had also mentioned a trash can and, um, some of those, uh, pet waste stations that we could put in there. And when I was looking at the map, Gilmore and Associates has already done, um, this map that you see that, that EJ has put up there of, and it's basically the, the concept plan. And I think if we give this back to Gilmore and just have them make some minor changes to this, we could put this in a sign on the park and make it a map for the park, for people. Um, and I just wanted to know if the board thought that that was a good idea? Bad idea? Comments?
It could be useful. Um, it would probably be reoriented so that you're, or, so it's oriented for, uh, where you're walking from the, from the sign. But otherwise, I mean, that's simple stuff. You just rotate the map a little bit.
Okay.
It's-
That's a good thought. Yeah.
Turn it all the way around. But other than that, I mean, that's super simple stuff.
Okay, all right.
I like the idea though.
Okay, cool. Um, and just to give you guys some perspective, I really think that this is probably something that could be relatively simple for Gilmore to do. I don't know if you guys can see this. I'm going to try to put this up here. I gave this as an example to some friends of mine, uh, to a friend of mine and said, "Hey, do you think you could do a map similar to this for our Valley Park and how much would it cost?" And that simple hand drawing, he said it would cost probably about $1,000. So I just thought that was a lot of money. Um, so I thought that just having Gilmore make these very minor changes, I don't think this is going to cost us $1,000 to have them do that. So, um, are you guys okay with having Gilmore make these minor changes?
Um, I, yeah, one question I had is the, the red dotted line actually now is a paved trail, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes, it is.
The area where you have potential future parking, I was up there the other day and I saw what I think were some of the land, I don't, for lack of a better word, landscaping socks or silt, um, barriers. Are they going to be removed or are they permanent?
No, they're, it's, it's my understanding that they're permanent and they're really important for, um, the, um, sediment control, um, until the plantings can become established. Basically what will happen with that stuff is that the, the membrane that's around the outside of it is biodegradable. So that will eventually disintegrate and the material that's inside of that will eventually biodegrade as well and become part of the landscape. But it's really important that that stuff stays there to help with the, um, the sediment control.
If I could just add, there are some locations that they are going to be removed. Uh, Martha's correct what she explained about them basically naturalizing. But some of them are there temporarily per the, our permit with the Chester County Conservation District. Um, I don't know. I, I don't, I'm not familiar enough with it to tell you which ones are going to be taken out and which ones are going to be left to naturalize, but I do know that some of them are going to be removed once the contractor's done.
Oh, well, that's good news. I didn't realize that. I thought they were all going to stay there. So-
Some, some will stay, some will go.
Okay, all right. Um, EJ, do you happen to have the, um, the other map that I did with all the signage and all that stuff?
I do not. Um-
All right. If you guys look at, um, your packets under a number, it says 2V-VP map with signage locations, um, okay, I'm trying to pull mine up here. So I, I put some, another, another map with some, some interpretive signage, um, and where we could possibly have a message board. Um, do you guys, are you guys okay with this? So, anybody have any comments? Now, is everybody okay? All right.
What, what were the signs? Sorry. Oh, they're on the other sheet. Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Flipping through this again. It's been a couple of days.
So they, the sign and the equipment samples, um, obviously we're going to have like an, an entrance signage. We're going to have like some trail markers, um, and, um, you know, like a, a message board, a trash can, interpretive signage for some certain areas, um, some pet waste stations and a couple benches. Now, I have to tell you guys, I did some research about costs for this stuff and, um, I got sticker shock. I was really stunned at how expensive this stuff is. And I said to EJ, "I'm not going to put any prices on this yet because I'm going to do a little bit more research because I think I could probably find stuff cheaper." And I will tell you, I spent a good two to three days researching this stuff and trying to find stuff that's less expensive. And I think I saved about $100. So all of this stuff, the benches, the trash can, the interpretive signage, the entrance sign, the pet waste stations, the message board, all of these, it's a total of about $9,600. It's a lot of money. Um,
That's less than I expected.
I don't know how to make it any cheaper. I really don't know how to make it any cheaper. I, I think that this stuff is, is important for it. I think it's something that residents have asked for. Um, so I can give this list to EJ and say, "Go ahead and spend it" if the board agrees to that. But I, I just wanted you guys to be aware of the fact that this is a lot of money and I didn't want you guys to get sticker shocked too and say, "Good Lord, Martha, what were you thinking? What were you doing?" So, um, does anybody have any comments?
That number was less than I expected.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be honest. I, I, in looking at this again and seeing, yeah, if that number includes all of the signage, the benches, the trash cans, the animal waste kiosks, that actually isn't that, that much for all of that equipment.
Yeah. I was thinking like seeing, I've seen park purchases before from when I worked with the federal government and they were more expensive.
Oh, yeah, the trash cans at, at, uh, Valley Forge Park, um, they were like $1,500 apiece. Now, I'm tell, I'm not buying a $1,500 trash can for our park, okay?
Correct, yeah.
So I, none of this, none of this stuff is super cheap. None of this stuff is, is super expensive. The stuff that I chose is kind of middle of, middle of the road. Um, but again, I mean, it's 9, $9,600. It doesn't include shipping. So it's probably going to be closer to $10,000. Um, but I just wanted to find out how the board feels about that. And if you guys are just going to say, "Nope," then I'm okay with that. But, um, I wanted to give EJ a shopping list or not give him a shopping list. So, um, Susan, do you have any gut feeling about this?
No, I thought it was, I thought it sounded good and I feel like we need to invest in some of the stuff to really make the park nice and usable and, you know, it's, it's worth it. It's really pretty, pretty out really nicely, Martha.
Okay, all right. Bob, do you have any comment?
No, I, I think the, the cost is, is probably as, uh, aggressive as I would have thought it'd been. The, um, the content was the only thing I wanted to, to ask you about. I see where you have, um, uh, lots of environmental content, but I wanted to throw it out to the Commissions for Open Space and Historic to see if they have anything they, they'd want to contribute.
Okay. That's a good idea. Sure, we could do that too. Okay. Um, but the content, I mean, that's, that can come at a later date. I mean, that's not something that's going to be included in the cost of purchasing this stuff. So, um-
I would just like to add though, that I feel like if we're going to throw this stuff out to the commissions, then they need to start meeting, whether it's by Zoom or otherwise, because this is a prime time for using the park. So I don't want to delay, you know, and I don't, I think they would probably be happy to meet. But I'm just saying, I think that if we're going to do that, which is a good idea, we should have them, tell them we would want them to meet if they're interested in reviewing it.
Okay.
I think you should give them a deadline, you know, if, if, if you want to participate in this or contribute, you, we need your feedback and recommendations by, you know, X date. Cause otherwise we've seen things just kind of- Because otherwise, we've seen things just kind of drag.
That's a good point.
I mean, it happens with all of us without deadlines. Sometimes things fall by the wayside.
How does that live meetings?
This is Madeline. Could the alternative signs be added at a later date? And get moving with what Martha has researched now?
Well, I think the content can be added later. If you look at the, the interpretive signage, they're blank. So the, the content can be added later. We can, we can install them. And yes, they'll be blank until we can get the content for it. But sure.
Yeah.
I can.
Martha, the, the pricing you got for all of this stuff, was it all from like one vendor? Or was it multiple vendors?
It was multiple vendors, yes. Yeah.
That's good. Because if it was all from one vendor, we, we, still, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if we're upwards of $10,000 from one vendor, we would have to get multiple quotes.
Correct.
No, it's not. It is definitely from multiple vendors. I could say right now it's one, two, three, four, maybe five vendors.
It's close enough. You're not allowed to have a job that would ordinarily be $15,000 and break it up into three just to avoid the, the bidding requirement. But I think this one is all right because it's, we're under a ten to begin with.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I can check also, Martha, and I apologize, I didn't think of this earlier. All of the vendors that you've looked at, I can see if any of them are on Co-Stars. And if not, I could try to find a competitor on Co-Stars because that kind of.
Okay, that's perfect.
Application for us, yeah.
Okay, I didn't even, I didn't even think of Co-Stars. I didn't even think of Co-Stars. Okay.
I'm sure there's Co-Stars vendors who, who do all of this stuff.
Okay. Um, so I guess I'll make a motion for me to move forward with the accessories for Valley Park. And purchasing the accessories for Valley Park. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All, any more comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask if there are additional signs. If, say if the historic were open space and hey, we'd like to have something, would that be an additional cost to what you have? Or are you looking to reallocate some of the signs that you have there already? I noticed there's, I think, three where you have content to be.
Well, you know, Bob, I think, I think what we could do is these signs are large enough that I think we could get multiple perspectives in each sign. I don't think it has to all be, you know, just from one perspective. So I think we could, I think we can work on that. I think, I think we could work with what we have.
Okay. And if we did need additional, we could always approach that later on.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. So one other question. Oh, wait, did we vote on that?
No, I, I'd like to ask a question before.
Motion second.
Before you vote.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, EJ.
And I know we can, we'll have a recording of this. We can go back and see exactly what was said. But is, is the motion on the floor to actually approve the purchase of these things right now? Or just to move forward with finalizing the quotes? Or there should be, you should, if you're approving a purchase, you should put a number, you know, like a preauthorization to purchase up to X number.
Oh, okay.
Open-ended.
Okay. All right. Then let me amend the motion to, to purchase the accessories for the park to not exceed $10,000. How's that?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. Um, so Mark, you had a comment? No?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Anyone else have a comment or question? Hey, oh, go ahead, EJ.
Yeah, the only other thing I would just, I do have the budget up on the other computer here. I don't, this wasn't really budgeted for, so this, this will be paid out of reserves. So just want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Uh, okay. Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. All right. EJ, you and I will, we'll talk this month about where I got my ideas and, and the stuff for this. So, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay. I don't think I have anything more to say about the park. That really took a long time. I do apologize. Okay, discussion, the township response to COVID-19 and the building reopening plan procedures. EJ?
Yeah, I'll just give a quick overview. Short of it is that as of right now, there's not an official plan because this whole situation is still very fluid. We've been kind of following Chester County's lead in terms of the county government operations, which is, you know, facilities are closed to the, buildings are closed to the public, essentials only services. Fortunately for us, we've actually, even though we have our administrative staff mostly teleworking, we haven't really seen an interruption of service, of township services. We've really maintained our level of service. It's just, it looks a little differently. But we're so very responsive. Public needs are being answered and addressed. The response time is a little slower at times, just given some of the limitations. But for the most part, we have kind of navigated this crisis without interrupting or putting a stop to township services. In terms of, of looking forward, what we might expect, obviously Chester County is still a red county, which means the stay-at-home order is still in full effect. We will not be opening, reopening the building to the public at least until Chester County moves from red to yellow. And even when that happens, it doesn't necessarily mean automatically the building's going to be open and things are going to resume to normal. We're looking at potentially a phased reopening, which might look like bringing some backs, some staff back, maybe go into two staff a day for a week or two and then, and then slowly increasing it. Maybe when the building opens to the public, only having it open for a few hours a day at first and then slowly phasing that to the full eight hours or requiring appointments for, for public visitors or meetings. In-person meetings are going to be, you know, discouraged or prohibited for the foreseeable future. You know, they, they can be addressed on a case-by-case basis with approval by myself in terms of, you know, if any, any staff feels a strong need to have an in-person meeting with someone, they'll need my approval to do that. But we're, we've been in touch with our emergency management team and also with all the other municipalities. Actually, had a virtual roundtable yesterday with the consortium of managers for Chester County. And we're, we're going to start doing that every other week now. So all the municipalities are on the same page about how they're handling this and how they're going to handle reopening. A lot of municipalities are kind of eyeing potentially the first week of June to start reopening. And that's, again, assuming that Chester County moves from red to yellow. We've been ordering and stocking up on equipment, PPE and cleaning supplies. Matt, we, we got the cloth washable masks. We got enough to distribute five to every administrative staff person. We also have some of the disposable masks on order. We're stocking up on clothes. We have hand sanitizer, cleaning disinfectants on order. We also have an order placed and we're waiting on shipment of multiple infrared touchless thermometers. Once we do resume some more normal operations with multiple staff coming in, I'll be requiring daily temperature checks upon arrival at the township building. The police department's already been doing that. I'm also working on, I copied from another municipality, basically like a, a daily self-screening, which is essentially like a, a health survey that employees will have to fill out before they come into work, answering questions about any potential symptoms they're having. So we're, we're working on getting all these things in place to take all the precautions necessary. Obviously, all the social distancing guidelines have been and will continue to be followed. You know, as far as the message to the public goes, just, you know, once, once something changes or once we have an update for the public, it'll be, you know, published to the public as soon as possible. So just continue to check the website, make sure you're signed up for our email service. Madeline's been doing a great job sending out daily updates with a bunch of really good information. We've also been pushing out some things on the Facebook page as well. So those are some of the things we're working on. Obviously, continue consulting with all the department heads. And I'll keep the board updated. And then once we have, once we have updates for the public, we'll push it out to the public.
Okay. All right. New business discussion, the 2020 curbing and paving program. EJ?
Yeah, so last month's meeting, the board asked if I could just kind of give a report of what's planned for this year. I did provide a memo to the board. As far as the paving work, the roads that are, have been identified for paving. And this year, we're doing the mill and overlay, which is what we do most years, which is a type of resurfacing that's, you know, you do to a road before it's completely failed or in complete disrepair because the cost to fully rebuild or reconstruct a failed road is about a million dollars a mile. So we have a, a cycle where roads are resurfaced. It's a basically a 20-year plan where we do a combination of mill and overlay or like an oil and chip treatment to extend the life of the road. Those are much more cost-effective treatments than doing like a, a full reconstruction. So the roads for this year are Meeting House Lane, Weathera Lane, Rossiter Ave and North White Horse Road. Obviously, South White Horse is a state rail, but the 23 is a, is a local road. The estimate for the cost, and this is, this is all included in our equipment rental contract. So it's already been bid out and, and approved. So we don't have to bid any of this out. It's about $419,440. I do want to point out that that's, that factors in the, the ass, the cost of the asphalt. And that's based on an asphalt index of $58 a ton. It's likely going to be lower than that. That estimate was put together a few months ago before the price of oil dropped. So the, the total cost should be less than that. We had budgeted about $519,000, so that, that's about $100,000 under budget. So that's actually one of those areas where we thought about, you know, maybe adding another road. And then we thought, well, that might be, these were the roads that had already been identified. Instead of adding another road, that might be a good place to save money. We didn't cut any roads that were planned to be paved this year, just the way the numbers fell in. We could have added, but that way we'll stay well under budget. As far as the paving goes, there is an agenda item under resolutions, which is a, a resolution to join the state contract for asphalt purchasing. We do that every year. It's basically like a Co-Stars contract for asphalt. So it gets us a better price without, without formally reaffirming our participation in that contract. The asphalt plans can charge us higher prices, like what they would charge a private, private company. So that's the paving. That's, and then the other component is the curb work, which every year we, we budget about $75,000 for curb repair. This year, the areas that were identified where the curb was in the worst shape and needed to be repaired, where it's Freedom Hill, Freedom View Lane, Guilford Circle and Sentinel Drive, Autumn Hill Lane and Summer Hill Lane. And those last two are in the Sunwood Farm developments. So for these, it's not necessarily the entire curb on those roads is being replaced. It's, it's the areas that are, that have fallen apart. And that's the rolled curb. Then we also, they need to replace the curb on Rossiter Ave, which is one of the roads slated to be paved. That curb has completely fallen apart. So you don't want to repave, they have to do, they have to mill at the curb line for a curb reveal. So we, we needed to replace the curb in order to do the paving job correctly. So the estimates, the, the total estimate for that curb work is anywhere between about $71,000 and $73,000. And the budget was $75,000. So that's the update. I don't, I don't need any action from the board on that. But if anyone has any questions?
Nope. Nope. I'm good. Any board member have any questions? Does the public have any questions about that, EJ?
Uh, nope.
Okay. All right. Discussion, tax lien exoneration for certain parcels in Schuylkill Township. Again, EJ?
Oh, so we received a request back at the end of March from the, from the county, from the Tax Claim Bureau. There's three parcels in the township that, that are delinquent in, in their real estate tax payments. The amounts are very low and the county has deemed them uncollectible because they're mobile home lots and the mobile homes themselves have all moved and been relocated. So the county needs the board to approve exonerating these, these lots, which basically takes them off the tax rolls. So the county doesn't keep trying to collect because they're uncollectible. So that, I think the total cost was, one of the parcels was $62, and that was over the course of three years. One of the parcels was $105 over the course of five years. And then the last parcel was $194 over the course of eight years. So that's what you're, that's what you would be losing in potential delinquent real estate tax collections by exonerating these parcels.
These are, these homes don't even exist, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion for that?
Yeah, so that's under the resolutions. We kind of structured this. So we could, we could explain these things at first and then have the approvals a little later on to just allow a little more time for public comment.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If these are lots that don't have a home, if somebody does buy the lot and build a home, then it changes the status. Is that correct? And then we can act again?
That was my question. I, it was my concern that I thought every lot had a, had a value and that somebody would buy it. But apparently, the tax on the land has been paid. There is a separate tax on the, on the mobile home, which is no longer there. So as a result, the, the property disappeared and we can't find the, the county can't find the owner of the mobile home. I don't think the, the mobile home park itself is in violation. And I think that's the difference because otherwise, somebody would buy it for something, you know, at a tax sale. But I don't think it's worth the effort of going through a tax sale for $20, you know, a year on one of those properties or $30 a year. So the county has requested that we basically give up on it.
But if a new home is placed on that lot, how, how are we notified?
I think the county would notify us. I think when a building permit goes out, we would get, we would have a notice then. And then we notify the county of the building permit and then they reassess the lot. I think even if another mobile home goes on, I think there's another reassessment.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Any more comments or questions on that? Okay, discussion, Act 15, Extension of Property Tax Payment Deadlines in Schuylkill Township. EJ?
Yeah, so this is another one. The, the resolution's a little later on the agenda for approval. But just wanted to explain what it is and allow time for comments or questions. This is the, the law that the governor recently signed in, into law, Act 15, which contained a number of measures to deal with the COVID-19 crisis. One of them was to allow a municipality to extend the discount period on the real estate taxes as well as the phase period, which, which basically, you know, is payment in full prior to any interest or penalties or late fees. So you could extend the discount period, I think, as late as August 31st. And you could extend, and the law allows you to extend the phase period through the end of December, which basically means that, you know, as long as a property owner pays their taxes by December 31st, there's no late fees, there's no interest or penalties. So I, at the board's request, I reached out to the tax collector. Aaron Kern asked him to run some numbers. We drafted a resolution. He reviewed it. He's in, he's in favor of it. He has received a lot of calls from residents. He's the one who kind of takes the brunt of the calls for anything dealing with taxes, asking if, if, you know, anything would be waived or if anything would be extended. So what we drafted was a two-month extension of the discount period, which the discount period actually ended April 30th. So it would extend it to June 30th. And he basically said that for any payments that came in within this past week, he would just hold them. And, you know, if any refunds needed to be issued, that would be no problem. he would just hold them, and, you know, if any refunds needed to be issued, that would be no problem. The two-month extension on the discount period, and then extending the face period to the end of the year. So again, that December 31st, as long as taxes are paid in full, there'd be no late fees or, or interest or penalties. He estimated the to, because the majority of, uh, property taxes are paid through escrow. They're, they're already paid automatically through mortgage escrows, and receives the vast majority of them during the discount period anyway. So by extending the discount period for two months, um, just in looking at the last couple of years and comparing numbers, he thinks, I, I think I mentioned this earlier, maybe about $10,000, $11,000, $12,000 that residents will save. Obviously, it'll be lost revenue for us, but it's, it's a nice gesture for residents, especially if anyone is experiencing some financial hardship right now.
Okay. Um, any comments or questions from the board? EJ, is there any comments or questions from the public?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Consideration of Appointment of Two Voting Members of the Schuylkill Township Planning Commission. Recommended by the Planning Commission are David Demme and Peter T. Bigelow. Town, both of them are township residents. Mark, would you like to, uh, comment?
Sure. Both David and Peter were interviewed by our planning commission and were recommended to be appointed to the planning commission as voting members. Um, right now, we're, we're down to four voting members after resignations, uh, and people moving out of the township. So this would put us at six members. We would have a seventh, one, so we would have one voting spot left and two, uh, alternate positions that we were created, so that we don't face this problem again, hopefully. So, uh, I know, um, at the moment, we're waiting on at least one, maybe two missions of, uh, resumes and, um, applications, so, um, we'll see that too. But this is just for the, the approvals, uh, approved, the approved appointments here with David Demme and Peter T. Bigelow.
Okay, um, I'll make that motion. Uh, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, um, any more comments or questions from the board? Are there any comments or questions from the public, EJ?
No, there are not.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of Authorization for Expenditure of the Township Funds, Up to $5,000 for the Purchase of Laptop/Tablets For the Board of Supervisors' Use and for Township Business Only. EJ.
We talked about this, hmm, maybe in February at the workshop, briefly, that, that I was starting to research some options. I think the majority of the board is now having some type of issue with their township-issue tablets, which are several years old now. So, um, looking in, I have a few different options, have narrowed it down. Yeah, so this is basically pre-authorizing me to purchase them, so I don't have to wait another month until next month's meeting. I don't, I don't anticipate that it's going to be that high. Um, I'm hoping to get something that's maybe like in the $300 to $400 range each, but I'm looking at two, like, kind of two-in-one type devices. Uh, so it's kind of like a, like a mini laptops, but also a touchscreen with a keyboard that's detachable. So something like a Mi- Microsoft Surface is at the higher-end price, right, uh, price-wise. Looked at some different, like Chromebooks, but I think pretty much all the manufacturers now, Dell, HP, Asus, Acer, all have kind of like those two-in-one, um, devices, so.
Okay.
Just asking your approval to buy you some new, uh, much more reliable devices.
My, mine's been glitching for a couple of weeks now, and I wanted to ask, the only thing that, uh, matters a lot to me is the dictate, uh, feature, that you can talk, you hit the button, talk, and it translates it into the text.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would like a keyboard, but I've already spoken to you about that. And, and email that works properly.
Yes.
Um, I will make that motion, do I hear a second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear, who made that second?
That was Bob.
Okay, okay. Um, any more comments or questions from, um, the board? Any comments or questions from the public, EJ?
Let me just double-check, I was just scrolling on the agenda. I realized I still had it at the top. Thank you, Mark, for pointing that out. Um, no comments or questions from the public.
Okay, um, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And yes, please, let's get on that as quickly as possible. No pressure there, EJ.
My personal mobile phone, so it's very small.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, let's see, um, resolutions and ordinances. Consideration of Adoption of Resolution 2020-18, Authorizing the Township to Participate in the Pennsylvania State Contract, Or is that an ITQ?
Aye.
Okay, ITQ, entitled "Bitumous Material, Plant-Mixed District 1-12 For the Purchase of Asphalt." Boy, that's a bit of a mouthful. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions from the board? EJ, any comments or questions from the public?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Consideration of Adoption of Resolution 2020-19, Exonerating Property Tax Leans Held on Certain Properties Within Schuylkill Township. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public, EJ?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, consideration of Adoption of Resolution 2020-20, Authorizing the Implementation of Provisions of Act 15 of 2020 Regarding the Tax Prop, I'm sorry, Regarding Property Tax Relief. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public, EJ?
There are none.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, subdivision and land development, we don't have anything. Uh, we don't, uh, any additional business? EJ?
Nope.
No? Okay, announcements, I do have a few announcements here. Give me just a second to pull them up, I apologize. The announcements for May, uh, 2020, uh, yeah, May of 2020. The Schuylkill Township Municipal Building remains closed to the public, and the township continues to operate on essential services, um, only basis. The staff is working remotely and responding to emails and telephone messages. The township will be holding virtual public meetings until further notice. Information on how to access these public meetings is published on the website and via the township's email distribution list prior to each meeting. Construction activities resumed on May 1st and under guidelines from the state. For information on construction within Schuylkill Township, please email zoning@schuylktp.org, and that is Kim's, um, email address. Our police department may be reached for non-emergency assistance at 610-935-2440. Please visit the township website for ongoing information about COVID-19, about the COVID-19 situation. Pennsylvania's primary election will be held on Tuesday, June 2nd. All voters now have the option to vote by mail. Visit the Chester County Voter Services webpage for more information. Because of illegal dumping at the township's leaf composting yard, residents' leaf drop-off and compost pickup are now by appointment only. Please call the township office to make your arrangements. Note that access will be dependent on the availability of personnel. The census is still happening. As of May 3rd, Pennsylvania's response rate was 58.5%. Chester County's was 68.2%, and Schuylkill Township's was 76.4%. Wow, that's amazing. Let's bring that number up, though, let's get it closer to 100. Every non-responsive citizen means a forfeiture of $2,093 per year loss of funding. Let's bring that funding home and fill out your census today. I mean, what else do we have to do? So, uh, you can reach, uh, find your census at 2020census.gov.schuylkillcounts, oh, .gov. I'm sorry, Schuylkill Counts. All right, um, any other announcements, EJ?
Uh, no.
Okay, public comment?
Um, there, there is none, um, maybe we can wait 20 seconds, um...
Okay, while we're waiting for that public, while we're waiting for that public comment, why don't we discuss, um, our potential workshop, um, topics, and then we can come back to public comment to see if anybody has anything they do want to discuss or ask the board?
It's a good idea.
So, um, we have pending here, um, Animal Waste Ordinance for the May Board Workshop Session and the Stop Sign and Speed Limit Ordinance Amendment for our May Board Workshop Session. Does anyone have any other topics that they wanted to bring up for our workshop meeting this month? Nope? Does anybody have, does anybody have any questions about these two, um, topics for our May, uh, workshop meeting? Okay, this is great.
I would add, Martha, I guess, um, if, if we are able to get a draft together in time, we can continue the conversation on the park rules and regulations ordinance. I'll work with Bill on that.
Okay.
That, boy, that would be a good workshop topic.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, let's go back to public comment, EJ. Do we have anyone for public comment?
Check here. Uh, no.
We have no public comment? Okay, I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Got a lot of seconds there, didn't we? Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, everybody, thank you, and have a very good evening.
Good night.
Good night, bye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye, I'm trying to figure out how to close this down.